Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Eternal and holy God, our Creator and Sustainer, we open our hearts and minds to your Spirit to guide us in the decisions we make. For those who are sick, give help. For those who are grieving, give comfort. Grant that the Spirit of goodwill and tolerance shall distinguish us as a community that respects the dignity of every person, that for all things we may be truly thankful. Amen.
Do you want me on the pledge?
We are the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsman, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Tafran, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from November 3rd's meeting. Council, you have had these well in advance of this evening and had an opportunity to look them over to make sure they reflect what happened at that meeting. Chair will entertain any motions relative to those meeting minutes.
Mayor, we had one adjustment to make, and Ms. Keeling has made it, so make a motion to approve.
Would you mind telling us what that adjustment is?
Be glad to. Jay Stepp made a motion to approve something, and then he was listed as the second council.
That's, I do stuff like that.
He probably did that, Connie. Thank you for changing it to...
It's very important.
It must have been.
Make a motion, I say make a motion.
Well, thank you for that. And then you did make a motion to approve those with the amendment?
With the amendment.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll start this evening with a proclamation. November is pancreatic cancer awareness month, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tate to read the proclamation on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Cartersville proclamation. Whereas in 2016, an estimated 53,070 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and 41,780 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer this year to become the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second leading cause by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 8 percent. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and 71 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. And whereas approximately 1,090 deaths were incurred in Georgia in 2016, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas there is an estimated 418,451 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the city of Cartersville are enhanced as a direct result in increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research in early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the city of Cartersville, do hereby proclaim November the 17th, 2016, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in our community. Mayor, we have with us tonight friends and relatives of Linda Parmenter, who this community lost to pancreatic cancer, along with others in our community. Julie Parmenter has done an awful lot in the last year to raise awareness, and indeed led a marathon and raised money. Was it just this last weekend done?
Yeah.
This last weekend. So we're really proud of what the family has done following up Ms. Parmenter's death to bring awareness to this terrible disease.
Absolutely. Would you like to present that to the family?
Yes.
Come on up.
(inaudible)
We have a series of second readings this evening, and we'll start off with file Z-16-05. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is a second reading. Property has been properly posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest with that. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this. This is approximately 22-acre tract owned by the city of Cartersville, and we're looking to rezone it from R-20 to public institutional. Again, with that, Planning Commission does recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Seeing none, I will open up a public hearing relative to file Z-16-05, and anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And when stepping forward to speak, please, your name and your address for our clerk.
My name's Jennifer Wiggins Matthews, and I reside at Four Lancer Drive. We back up to the property. As you know, I've attended the meeting, the first meeting, and I came last time. We appreciate all that you're doing to protect our neighborhood, and my final request would just be that if whoever's in charge of the project and the building would work with us as far as lighting and sound. We can, as I mentioned to the mayor before the meeting, we can hear the garbage truck back up. We hear the nice beep 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 in the Shaw plant parking lot. So anything that we can do to buffer that noise, and especially that light, there's just, with the growth of Cartersville, we have a lot of traffic on Old Mill. We're hearing a lot of noise, and so if we could make it where we don't even realize the gas department's there, that would be the perfect ideal situation. So that's what we're asking for. So if you'll so kindly allow us to talk with whoever is in charge of that construction, and let us know as far as landscaping and lighting and sound, we greatly appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on Z-16-05 may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll take it to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is file T-16-02. Randy?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is, again, a second reading, and this is an applicant-driven text amendment. This proposed text amendment is to allow some expansion of residential use in the downtown business district, Noble Street and Thompson Street. And from the first reading, we had noted that the applicant owns a piece of property on Noble Street, and the way our ordinance is written right now, we only allow residential above and behind. This particular text amendment would allow it on the front on particular streets that aren't necessarily all commercial. With that, Lily Reed ran it through the downtown, the DDA Board, or DDA Authority, and they did support a text amendment to allow more residential in the downtown. City staff is looking at additional ways to amend the ordinance to continue to push more residential downtown, and with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this proposed text amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino on this item? Thank you, Randy, and I'll open up a public hearing for file T-16-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take it to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is file T-16-02. Randy?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is, again, a second reading, and this is an applicant-driven text amendment. This proposed text amendment is to allow some expansion of residential use in the downtown business district, Noble Street and Thompson Street. And from the first reading, we had noted that the applicant owns a piece of property on Noble Street, and the way our ordinance is written right now, we only allow residential above and behind. This particular text amendment would allow it on the front on particular streets that aren't necessarily all commercial. With that, Lilly Reed ran it through the downtown, the DDA Board, or DDA Authority, and they did support a text amendment to allow more residential in the downtown. City staff is looking at additional ways to amend the ordinance to continue to push more residential downtown, and with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this proposed text amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino on this item? Thank you, Randy, and I'll open up a public hearing for file T-16-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and give it to council for final consideration.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is file T-16-03. Randy?
Thanks again. This is a city of Cartersville-initiated proposed text amendment to the public institutional zoning district to allow a few more uses in that particular zoning district, specifically nursing homes, retirement centers, medical offices, clinics, hospitals. With that, I had noted in the first reading that all of our non-residential categories currently allow this. For some reason, when we were doing the text amendments to the zoning ordinance back in 2010, we left it off in public institutional to begin with. But with that, we did have a first reading on this. There's been no additions or changes since the first reading. Additionally, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this proposed text amendment.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on this item? Thank you, sir. Open up a public hearing for T-16-03. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-16-03, and give it to council for final consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have a second reading of ordinances this evening. Mr. Sanders, if you'll carry those two items for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This first one is for a school zone on Church Street and in front of Cartersville High School, and there's been no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sanders?
This is a loaded one. Are they going to ask for lights with that?
That's, that's the goal of the school system, I've been told, is to get lights.
When you say lights?
Flashers, flashing lights. You don't have to have flashing lights to, for a school zone. You know, Cartersville High School's been there since 1952, and it's in an urban area. We, I've had lots of discussions with the city school system, but, you know, they feel strongly that they want lights. Don got an estimate from his signal contractor, lights would be about $16,000. But, you know, what you're voting on tonight is to establish the, to change the radar permit where the police department can enforce the school zone.
I understand that. I wasn't trying to sidetrack it, but I thought if that was an issue, we may as well get it out and talk about it.
The school zone can, in the school zone, they can enforce the speed limit at one mile per hour. Over. The speed, we're not changing the speed limit. The speed limit on that stretch of road's 25, and it's, the school zone's going to be 25. But now, somebody has to be going 36 before they can give them a ticket, is my understanding, where this, this way, if they're going 26, they can get a ticket. But, so you don't have to have flashers to have a school zone. This is perfectly acceptable. This is the sign on Edgewood Drive, for example.
Is there any kind of standard that governs that, or doesn't? I, I'm asking out of ignorance because I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, generally, in a urban, generally where you have the flashers is, is when you're in a rural, high-speed area where you're not expecting a school to be.
Okay.
You know, like, well, Woodland is a good example. Woodland High School. You know, you're on Old Alabama Road, you're out in, you know, not much development on either side, and then all of a sudden, boom, there's a school. So the flashers are appropriate in that kind of situation. But, you know, in a downtown, downtown Cartersville, an urban area where you're, there's all kinds of driveways and a lot, you know, development, you know, it's not really, it doesn't, a school being there meets driver expectations. So there's no reason, in my opinion, to go the extra mile. But if, you know, if they want to put in flashers, you know...
Well, sorry for the aside. I just wanted to make them aware of that conversation. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Sanders on this item, or any further discussion? If there's none, then chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item, please. Tommy?
Yes, sir. The next item is the revision to the erosion control ordinance, and there's been no changes since the first reading. And as discussed before, this is just basically administrative changes, cleaning up some definitions. There's not really anything substantial as far as the requirements on developers. It's just more of an administrative update.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions? Go ahead.
So I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I was not here last meeting, when y'all evidently talked about this the first time. So what we're doing with this does not put any more undue stress on construction development, developers period?
No. This is a, this is a model ordinance that's given to us by the state. We're basically required to, if we want to be in compliance with the permit, the MPDES permit, we're required to adopt the model ordinance by December 31st.
Okay.
And, but it's, yeah, the changes that they made are not, there's nothing significant there in our opinion.
And the city, typically in our ordinance, we come up with those in-house, so to speak. We don't strictly stick to GDOT.
Well, the, the erosion control ordinance comes from Department of Natural Resources.
Right, but I'm going out, in, in general, we come up with our own ordinances when we can. GDOT is something, is a guideline, right?
Now, are you talking about the driveway manual?
No, just in general. When, I find every time we come up with a new ordinance or an amendment, it depends on the department, but it ends up GDOT this, GDOT that. So for me, I need to understand whether we run under GDOT guidelines, GDOT requirements.
GDOT's transportation.
Yeah, but it still comes up.
Yes.
This would be, this would be EPD or DNR.
Right. But as far as what you're saying, like, where we use GDOT is, for example, in the development regulations, where, where it talks about whether a right-turn lane or a left-turn lane is required, the, our, our ordinance says basically that that's up to the judgment, the engineer judgment of the city engineer.
Okay, so it's a guideline.
And, and we use GDOT's driveway manual, which has charts that gives traffic volumes. We, we do use that to help make our decisions.
Right, but, but again, it's a guideline. Yeah. Okay. I'm good now. I understand.
Tell me to forgive me. I, maybe I was sleeping through the last minute while I was here. Did you provide us with a copy of the ordinance showing exactly what was to be changed?
The ordinance was, is really big, and we put in the notes that it's, we have it at Public Works in case somebody wanted to see it, but it was, it was, you know, like...
We can get you a copy of it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. It says reflecting minor changes that involve additions, definitions, and changes to technical terms. So is it just strictly isolated to the definitions portion of the ordinance? Or is this going to be something that's going to affect the substantive aspect of your ordinance?
There were revisions throughout the erosion control ordinance, but they were minor. You know, there's no, like, you know...
Give me an example. Can you give me an example of what's, like, a technical change in technical terms?
I can't think of a good example right now. You know, clarifying, like, what can be done or not done, maybe in the 25-foot buffer, you know, that, that hand, clearing of underbrush by hand can be done, but no mechanized, you know, it was just clarifying things that were already basically a given.
And you're saying this is, this is something that we must adopt for the state?
Uh, well...
Let me respond. We don't have to adopt it, but if we don't adopt it, we no longer will be permitted by EPD to be the jurisdiction...
BOP won't give you permits.
I'm sorry, what?
It's tied, it's tied to MPDES. That's BOP.
Well, we can give up our right to enforce these ordinances and let the state do it instead of the city, and that's what will happen if you don't adopt this ordinance. Am I right?
Yes, sir. You're exactly right. We are currently a local issuing authority, and a big part of that is we get to review our own plans. We, and we regulate ourselves. So in the plan review process, where now, when somebody submits plans, we can review them in a two-week time period and have them comments back. If we lose our status as, as a local issuing authority, everybody who wants to do development in Cartersville would have to send their plans to the EPD to be reviewed, and the EPD would also do erosion control inspection and enforcement, and...
There are times when you would gladly give it back to them, too, aren't there?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just trying to make sure that I fully understand what we're changing when it comes to the ordinances, because with Cartersville growing like it is, I want to make sure that we're not constraining the progress of development via these terms and changes.
There's nothing in...
Versus, you know, I just want to keep things kind of...
But you didn't, but you didn't write this ordinance. This is passed you by the state.
This has come from the state.
And that's what I'm trying to clarify. Just want to make sure that's...
Right. And it's, there's nothing, you know, there, like, right now, if you disturb more than an acre, you have to ha, get a land disturbance permit. They didn't change that. You know, they didn't change it to one, to a half an acre, or anything.
But that wasn't, that's just the state's, or basically that's what the state's telling us from your ordinance.
Right. They, they submit a model ordinance and say, this is what we want you to adopt.
That's all I needed to know. Appreciate it, Tommy.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Manino, you're back up with another item.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is impact fee ordinance. With that, we are required to annually submit an update to the Department of Community Affairs and the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. With that, even though we've had no receipts because we've amended our impact fee ordinance fee schedule to zero, because the ordinance is still on the books, we are required to go through this process. So we'll turn in a financial statement showing zero receipts and zero expenditures. Additionally, with that, we have to update our short-term work program, and with that, we have our draft. The draft will be submitted as part of this public hearing process or transmitted, and we're requesting that you approve this transmittal resolution. Once it's transmitted, the Department of Community Affairs will review it, send it back to us. We'll make any additional changes and put it back on the agenda for adoption in, sometime in January. With that, we recommend your approval of this transmittal resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item?
I have just one question for you, Randy. Once we, this comes back to us and we adopt it, and, and then at some point, we wanted to put impact fees back on. This is in place. We have it...
We've kept our ordinance in place, so we don't have to go through cer, we don't have to jump through certain hoops to get one back up and rolling. Now, we probably would have to do an additional fee structure study to make sure everything was in line, but again, we wouldn't have to go through a certain process to adopt an ordinance.
If you remember, it was either in, I'm guessing it was '09, it may have been '08, when we decided to, to roll those back, when the, when things had slowed down so much, that the decision was made to roll the impact fees back to zero versus totally doing away with impact fees. If you do away with them, the process to reinstitute them is a much longer, more arduous task...
That is correct.
Than, than simply having them at zero and, and doing what we're doing here.
Alls we will have to do now is a fee schedule amendment. We won't have to go, jump through the hoops to re-adopt a new impact fee ordinance and go through the process we went through last time, which we probably spent 18 months to two years going through the process last time.
Well, Randy, counties north of us, let's say, are most of those counties, most of those municipalities, you don't know?
I can't, I have no idea. I've worried about Cartersville on this particular one, so I don't, I don't know that the other...
I just wondered if they could just let it go or it comes to...
But there weren't a lot of counties north of us actually implementing impact fees to begin with.
The ones with what?
South there have been, and in the metro Atlanta area. Not a lot of them, there not a lot of them that had, had impact fees implemented, but the ones that did, a lot of them kept them in place. But at the same time, there wasn't a lot of impact fee revenue coming in because the development was not occurring.
Good. Thank you, Randy. We have to have a public hearing relative to this annual update of the capital improvement element and short-term, short-term work program. So if anybody would like to step forward, speak on that, they may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will give it to council for final consideration. And once again, your motion would be to approve the resolution of transmitting the draft to DCA?
Make a motion to that effect.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Riggs, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor. This is our annual dues for the Utility Protection Center. It's in the amount of $9,537.87, or 80, 86 cents, sorry. And we're required by state law to be a member of the UPC.
Just call before you dig stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Ms. Brock?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is an agreement between the city of Cartersville and Hoxley to explore various water billing structures throughout the United States. The research will show how systems throughout the country generate revenue to cover additional expenses with the increasing water quality requirements. As the city becomes subject to these additional requirements, the information will be used to understand all the options for cost recovery that may be available to us. Keith has reviewed the agreement and made any necessary changes, and we ask for your approval of the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions for Tamara on this item?
What she's talking about is the environmental piece. You know, we'd always talked about the existing that we have to, to invest in, and the environmental piece, and this will help us with that.
Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Brock. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
All hail Dwight.
This is the annual renewal of the employee health insurance. We recommend renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia. You have questions?
Thank you for the brevity.
Well, I, I, if I'm nothing, I'm...
He's a tough guy today.
That's right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hale on this item?
It does seem unfavorable for our employees.
What's that?
It does seem to be more favorable for our employees.
I'm sure they'll appreciate it.
I think that's a great thing.
Okay. Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I would love to approve the recommendation about the bid that we have for insurance.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dwight. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. This is for the purchase of communication equipment and phones and computer services, outdoor cameras for the Billinger Park buildings. The city IT department will be purchasing this. Our estimated cost is $58,000, which is budgeted... dollars, which is budgeted. I'm going to ask for a number not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, which is the budgeted number for this, for, for the city's IT departments to purchase this equipment.
Sam, I've got a question for you about this. When we're talking about the city's IT department purchasing this equipment, are they going to then be making proposals to us as to what bid we accept?
This is a lump sum. If you, if you want to go through a line item by line item, we can bring it in here and let you do that. But this is, this is a lump sum to cover all that.
But it says these aren't things that are going to be put up for bid?
These are things that they would go out and find the best price on. Technically, you don't have to publicly bid them as they would tell you, but whatever approach you want to take, okay with me.
Okay.
This just gives them a number to shoot at, and they'll buy the equipment, all the stuff you talked about in the bill.
Yeah, now, my understanding is, is they get the state contract price on, on, on the equipment.
This is funded from bomb plants?
Yep.
And so that's what we do with all of our other cameras and stuff for any other facility?
Well, when you do a new facility, it'd be similar to when we built the fire stations and police the fire. You have to, you have to kind of outbid, and it wouldn't be exactly the same as now, but you gotta...
But the IT department sort of adds that up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And they're doing a lot of the installation of it.
Okay. Cool.
Do you, do you need a list?
Um, a list of...
Of the stuff they're buying?
No, I was just wanting to see if we would be bidding on this.
Well, to me, yeah, yeah. I had kind of the same concern when it came forward as a lump. I mean, if you want to see all the stuff they buy, we can...
Prefer to see who we're buying it from personally. That's something we can pick up on.
Okay. We'd do that, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We talk about parks that need to be compatible with each other.
Uh, well, again, this, this was, this was designed by the city's IT department. It, it matches the existing cameras that we have, and in our new buildings, there are specific areas that will be under a, a video surveillance. And our, our, again, our phone system is to match the rest of the cities.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, you go ahead. You know, now that Taffes brought this up, so who do we use, like, in the, in the past? We, I mean, we just bid it. The IT department bids it out.
We don't...
What we're telling them is up to sixty thousand. We don't care who you buy from. Just get it under sixty thousand.
Here are the pieces that you're given authorization from. As, as I mentioned, we can bring it in here a piece at a time. It's, it's no difference to me.
I would, I mean, I, I don't have a problem agreeing to it, but I'd just say, you know, as always, strongly consider using local people if we can.
I'd like to see this, this is kind of, funds like this, we can spend back into the...
I'll be glad to get, uh, to get each, the manufacturer and where we're purchasing it from, from, again, from, from the IT department.
If we can't do it locally, then I understand, but if, do our, do our best efforts to try to do that.
Try to do that.
I would imagine it's already been tried, but...
If you have a vendor that's in your ear, please let him know.
No, I'm just saying, I know this, I tell them, if this blocks some equipment, I think it would be a, a good thing for the city to do that.
Any other discussion or questions?
So, Mayor, we're asking for a motion up to sixty thousand dollars, if you're looking at the case.
Correct. With that purchase coming from our own MIS department to purchase the things they need for the, or the, purchasing infrastructure for the park.
Because they'll be putting it in.
Right. And they'll be doing a lot of the work as well.
I'll make that motion up to sixty thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand, you mean?
Well, he said up to sixty. Yeah, not to exceed sixty.
Not to exceed sixty. Have to tell the housing department.
All right, so I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got our Cogswell software amendments.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we have received the annual invoice for Cogswell for our maintenance of our third-party software for the billing piece of the software. Without this software, we would not be able to build the utility bills. The invoice is for sixty-eight thousand eight hundred eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Represents a two-point-seven-one percent increase. I've talked with the Cogswell folks. They assure me that this is as low as it can go, with the expectation that we will be receiving the support that we need along with the product improvements. This is a budgeted item, and I recommend the approval of the Cogswell invoice in the amount of sixty-eight thousand eight oh eight ninety-eight.
And I got one thing.
All right, head.
No, you can ask your questions. I always jump ahead of you.
Just, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have one. Uh, this is not the, Cogswell is the actual software in the system. As far as who we use for our residents to use a credit card and pay, that's completely separate.
That's correct.
Okay.
Cogswell is, is the name of the third-party vendor who we use to do our, our actual invoice for the billing, utility billing.
And we use somebody else.
Invoice Cloud is who we use for the online payments now.
Gotcha. Okay.
Very good. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please, the financial report.
Yes, sir. I would like to point out on the, on your packet, the information that was sent in your packet, there was one typo. If you look at the revenue for the water in the two thousand and sixteen year, that was, should be three, three million, three thirty-two. I believe in your packet, it was three hundred and thirty-two thousand. I apologize for that typo, so I wanted to point that out before I got started.
That's in our packet, not in the handout that you gave us.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And tonight, we'll be, we're looking at the September two thousand sixteen number, actually, two thousand and fifteen number, and comparing to two thousand and fifteen. In the general fund, revenues decreased over last year by four hundred and nine thousand dollars. Expenses increased by eight hundred and three thousand dollars. Three areas of revenue that I look at in the general fund on a monthly basis are the local option sales tax. You'll see that we've got a decrease of about a hundred and three thousand dollars. Police fines and forfeiture, so we have a decrease of about forty-three thousand dollars. And billing permits and inspection fees, one good bright spot, have an increase of about thirty thousand dollars. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last September by five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Expenses increased by two hundred and one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel, increased operating, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by ninety-six thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This is due mainly to decreased costs of electricity and decreased capital expenses. In the stormwater, revenues increased over last year by twenty thousand dollars. Expenses increased by fifty-three thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by eighteen thousand dollars, and expenses increased by fifty-nine thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. And finally, in the fire and water objects fund, revenues increased over last year by ten thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by forty-five thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, offset by decreased debt service expenses and decreased capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Reinhardt on the financial report?
I'm glad to see building permits going up. That's what I'm glad to see.
Me, too.
It went up last year, but it's actually going up again this year also, so it's a good number.
Question?
Yes.
We all know that there's the mystery of the local option sales tax going down.
Oh, my gosh.
Uh, but I've seen the trend that the, the police fines and forfeitures have continued to go down also.
Correct.
We just have more law-abiding citizens now?
I can only suspect that, that there are, there are number, my, what I, what I have intoned is that the, they are not concentrating more so on the traffic citations or trying to get the heavier crime, the more involved crimes off the, so they're kind of letting maybe some of the...
She can stay. I got you. Understood.
Bigger fish to fry.
Yeah.
I'm sure he loves to have that.
If you're having marking tires downtown, you've been there and done that before.
I got you.
Any other questions for Tom? Anything to add? Rose, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. What's that? That was just for a discussion. I missed nothing more.
No, you don't need to.
Any other business that needs to come forth, Council, this evening?
Yeah, we have to add on.
Oh, we do have to do that. My apologies. Thank you. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to add one item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Item added. Mr. Archer, please steer the ship.
A meeting or so ago, Council adopted an intergovernmental agreement with Bartow County to create the new entity called the Bartow Carterville Land Bank. There were a couple of blanks in the agreement that y'all adopted that needed to be filled in for it to be complete, and the county has requested the additional paragraph that would provide that any action that the land bank takes with regards to property in unincorporated Bartow County would require at least one vote of the county board members. Any action taken inside the city would require at least one vote from the city members. Those are the only changes. And I, I asked that you're, and if you choose to adopt it, that the motion include the canceling of the previous adopted intergovernmental agreement and it be replaced with this one, and then we'll transmit it to the county for them to adopt it.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion or clarification needed by Council? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to cancel the previously adopted orders and to approve this one.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any other business that needs to come forth, Council, this evening? Uh, do just want to mention Dan Portal lost his brother earlier this week, and want to wish our best to him while he's tending to that family matter down in Florida. Just wanted to note that for the record. Football game in town Friday night, hopefully won the week after that, and also our last meeting before Thanksgiving. And while people are out traveling and being safe and enjoying the holidays, we've got people that are on call twenty-four-seven to make sure that, that they can do so in a, in a fun environment. And so those efforts for all the employees that are, that are on that call twenty-four-seven, we appreciate you, and we thank you for that. Our next meeting will be a morning meeting. That is December the first, and we'll have the work session at eight o'clock, and the meeting at, the business meeting at nine o'clock AM, so change in time there. Anything else to add by anybody? If there's none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Stay go. Did not get a response by that guy.